I go by the light.
I would like to call to order the city council meeting for Monday, June 15, 2015. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Wood?
Here.
Alder Spate?
Here.
Alder O'Connor?
Here.
Alder Holmquist?
Here.
Alder Thomas?
Here.
Alder Bussie?
Here.
Mayor Miller?
Here.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would entertain a motion for approval of the minutes of the June 1 meeting.
So moved.
Motion in second. Are there any corrections or delegations? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The minutes have been approved. We do have one gentleman here for the appearances section. Mr. Leroy Shori would like to speak against responsibility and well abandonments. Mr., is it Shori?
Yes.
Okay, please, if you could, this is televised around the world, so we, yeah. This is for our local cable, so if you'd step to the podium over here, please. And introduce you. Okay?
I can hand that out.
Okay, thank you. And if you would also provide your address when you get up to the podium, please. Welcome.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to come before the council and speak on this matter. My name is Leroy Shori. I live at 205 Starry Avenue in Monona. And the subject matter that I indicated on there was responsibility for, well, responsibility in general and also how it relates to well abandonment. I bought the home at Starry Avenue in 1992. Well, I should tell you at the beginning that I have a disability and if I'm not speaking clearly or whatever, just let me know. It's not related to any abuse of anything.
You're doing fine. You're doing fine.
So, in 1992, I bought the house and I had city water and city sewer at that time. I did not think about a well. It didn't even cross my mind when I bought the home. In March of 2015, I received a letter asking or directing me, I guess, to abandon the well or bring it up to speed to be used. And I thought that was strange. I said, I didn't even know I had a well. That's what I was thinking in March and I said, "Well, I don't have a well and there's none obvious on my property, so I better contact the city." So I did that on March 6. There was an email thing about that that I passed out. But the city responded that, yes, I did have a well and they sent me a postcard, an image of a postcard that I signed in March of 1992 shortly after I bought the home. And I just want to read one small part of this. It isn't very long anyway and I handed it out. It has two check boxes. "Yes, I would like the city to assist in complying with Wisconsin Administrative Code NR, such and such, and City Ordinance, such and such, in the abandonment of my well." I checked that box. On the bottom, it says, "I agree to allow the city of Monona access to my property to properly abandon my well," period. "By signing this form, I also agree to hold the city and its agents harmless from any actions arising from the well abandonment project pertaining to my particular property." So when I received this, I said, "Well, you know, if there's a well here, somebody took care of this in 1992, so I was happy." And I didn't think too much about it. And then later, well, I corresponded back indicating that, well, this was done in 1992 and I wasn't aware of any on my property anyway. So it went back and forth for a while. And I have to say that the time lapse between March of 92 and when I received this letter, as you can recognize, was 23 years. During none of that time did anyone contact me about the well or was a subject of the well ever brought up. So after I got some more correspondence about abandoning the well, I said, "I would like to have someone come out and find out where this well is and what's happened in 1992." Eventually, a couple months later, someone did come out from the city utility and found a slab on the west side of my property, which I considered, and my neighbors have always considered, not to be on my property, but to be on the property just to my west, which would be 207 Starry Avenue. So, you know, when they came out, I said that there's a slab over there, or a partial slab of some concrete, but I don't know what's there or whatever. So they went on and they cleared off all the dirt and they found a well cover. And they opened the well cover and they said the well was not abandoned. So, you know, my inclination is to say, "Well, city was supposed to do this in 1992. Nothing's happened. What happened in 1992?" Well, further correspondence went on that there is no record by the city of anything that went on in 1992. They had a record of this, but they did not have a record of anything having been done or anything else relating to the property. And I said, "I still, as a secondary matter, you know, not sure if any of this well or all of it is on my property because we had a fence and there's a little diagram there, but there's a fence that has always been there on the west side of my property, which divided the property." There was also, on the east side, there was a house almost immediately, which divided the property. And my property is 60 feet by 109 feet. So I said, "Be helpful, you know, to know where my property lines are." I talked, well, when I talked to the city, they said they could, initially, they couldn't do anything, but eventually the city said, "Well, we can bring out the utility people and find their two front markers." Because they had done this evidently for street purposes. And I also talked to my neighbor on the east side and found a marker on the east end in the rear of the property, so those three markers were found. And when the city agent came out, I asked whether they could find the fourth marker in the rear of my property. They said they were not authorized to find another marker. So I would, they recommended that I call a surveyor to find the other marker. Well, I called a few surveyors and they ran anywhere from $300 to $500 to do this and all of them were busy for, very busy at this time of year for probably another month. So I said, "Well, you know, I'm not stupid. I can, got three points of a rectangle here. I think I can find out where the fourth point is." So I did that as best I could, thinking, "Well, if I can show that none of this is on my property, finding, well, you know, I can argue this further." Well, I went out and did this, spent a lot of time doing line work and whatever. And I came to the conclusion today that, yes, part of this well is on my property. There's a four-by-four concrete slab on the west side of the fence that was dividing my property. And when I drew a line from the marker to where the marker should be on my property, there was about seven inches of the concrete slab that would appear to be on my property line. The rest of it would have been on the west of that property, on the neighbor's property. That line cut across part of the cement slab and part of the cover on the slab. And in discussing a little bit about the well with the utility guy that came out, he said, "The well," I said, "Is the well just one small circle or is it the whole concrete area?" And he said, "Well, it's considered to be the whole area." So it's about four-by-four, I believe, the concrete slab. So, you know, I'm not going to prolong this a great deal, but my reaction was not good initially. And I thought that, you know, when the city says it's going to do something, it does it. And I think when the city does something, it keeps a record of it. Or if it doesn't do anything after indicating it was going to do something, that would keep a record of that. Well, you know, I don't know of any tornado or fire or anything that occurred in 1992 that might have disrupted that whole business, but, you know, the response I get is that there was no record. And also, just as a maybe small item, you know, when the city came out to find the marker in the front, they certainly had equipment that finds metal markers. They had to dig down about six inches to find that one, but found it because they had a very good electronic marker finder. I don't know what the rules are about, you know, helping a citizen out to find a marker on the property, but that was a little disturbing to me. But anyway, that's why I'm here today. I'm asking the council to take the responsibility for this that it had in 1992, that it said it had. And according to the letter that I received back in March of 2015, it sounded like they were shifting the whole responsibility onto the property owner, the cost onto the property owner and whatever. I understand that this well, and I'm not certain of it, is a shared well or could be a shared well. At least in my mind and from every measurement that I could take, that the majority of this well is not on my property, but some of it is. So if it's, you know, and when the two gentlemen that came out to find that the well was not abandoned, you know, they were talking about the electric and they asked about my property and I said, "You're welcome to come into my property and look for the electrical hookup to the pump or whatever was there at the time." So they went down, went down to my basement. I said, "All the electrical work in my house is, comes from the east side of the house." And the only work I had done on electricity during my time there was to upgrade the service to 100-amp service, which they did a few years back. But there was no electrical work on the east side of my property. There is a pipe that brought in the water at one time evidently, but it was never operated by me. I never turned it on. I never tried to. So that's, you know, that's where I sit with this. And so my request is to have the city take care of its responsibility and that's why I put responsibility on the agenda. And secondarily, if the city just absolutely refuses and I receive an order on this or whatever, there would be a necessary communication to my neighbor about the shared well business. The neighbor is brand new. I've had three neighbors there in the past. A new neighbor, I'm sure, probably doesn't know anything about the well and maybe the city records never showed that it was a shared well or whatever. But I have no idea why that well was planted there. Yes?
Do you know if there is a pipe going from the well to your neighbor's home?
I have no idea.
Okay. And how long have you lived in this property?
I've lived on the property 23 years plus. I bought it in early 1992.
So, okay, so that was your, oh, yes, it is your signature on the postcard, yeah.
Yeah.
And have you discussed with Mr. Stefani at the city or anyone else? Has anyone given you any indication that your neighbor is potentially partially responsible for this well?
Only the fellow that came out marked today said that if it's indeed a shared well, then you would have a shared responsibility, assuming that the city would not do anything.
Alder Thomas?
Did you ask Mr. Stefani, did you point out, I assume you pointed out the postcard to him, did you ask him if the city would live up to its responsibility and do then? And that the city would take responsibility for abandoning the well?
Yes, I mean, part of the emails, and I don't know if you've read them all.
Well, I didn't have a chance to read it all.
But yes, that was discussed. And I got a letter from Mr. Stefani very recently and he just, the letter just flat out said, "This well is on your property. You are responsible." I mean, that's basically the gist of the letter. Didn't give any...
What's involved in abandoning a well?
Well, there's two processes that we're looking for at this point in time. First of all, this is mandated by the state.
By the state, right.
Yeah. And either the well has to be in working order and the property owner has to supply two samples at a certain time apart to prove that the water is in working order and it's safe. Or the well has to have, be abandoned and that's put in clean material down there so that nothing could be dumped down there that could contaminate the groundwater source. So there is a process. Plumbers do it. They take care of it. It's, we have 48 of them, I believe, right now that letters went out this spring in regards to either checking their well to make sure it's in working order or to make sure it's been abandoned. So this is one of 48.
Has anybody else who got, I mean, the card that we sent, we can't be, I mean, if somebody in 1992 didn't do what we said, I think we all feel badly about that, but we can't hold current staff. I mean, we can't blame them for the fact that somebody else did that. But we did say, I sort of don't, I think this card is confusing because it says, "I will help you. I would like the city to assist me in complying." And then down below, it says, "I agree to allow the city access to my property to properly abandon my well."
And Alder Thomas, we're going to have to be careful about not discussing this.
Not on the agenda.
Not being on the agenda. And that doesn't mean we won't follow up and deal with and respond to this. So we're not ignoring you, sir. It's just that because it's not on the agenda, we have to be real careful about conducting city business. So my suggestion, if there's points of clarification, yeah, Alder Wood?
Seems like this problem might benefit from going to the Public Works Committee and having them, they'd have more time to look at the materials and, you know...
What we will do is provide you with the suggested steps to take. Again, not taking an official position on how this might come to fruition. And I know you've already gone through a correspondence trail and I appreciate the concern there. But we will provide you with a suggested path that you could take these concerns to and that we'll bring it to ahead of some nature.
Okay, I just also want to say that I have contacted Abandonment Office and this is an expensive process. It was like almost $300 just to come out and do an estimate. I also talked with the DNR because they had some records of a well and I thought that they could give me some more information about wells. And they indicated that there was a grant program, but the grant program is a very low financial threshold type thing. It's a need-based type thing, so...
I hope we can help in terms of gathering the resource information for you to, you know, so we all can make a decision going forward. But I do assure, Pat gave city...
Administrator.
Administrator, thank you. City Administrator Marsh just gave you his contact information and you can expect to hear back, you know, on behalf of the city from him. And we'll probably see you again.
All right. Thank you. Again, my major concern is that the city take the responsibility, at least in my reading of that card, said it would do in 1992.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else, ma'am? You don't care to speak or register? Okay, that is fine. I will declare the appearances section closed. There is no public hearing this evening. There is a lengthy consent agenda.
Just wanted to point out that the first item on the consent agenda is actually, should be on new business and probably taken together with the actual new business item.
I'm sorry? Place it into where it was scheduled on the agenda. Okay, so if anyone heard that, I would entertain a motion to move item...
I would move that we take item F1 and remove it from the consent agenda and move it to F2A. G2? G2?
G2A.
G2A, thank you. G2A.
It should be G2B, I'm guessing. Yes, G2B.
It would be.
Under 2A already, isn't it?
This is a little different than...
No, those are two different.
This is different than this. So it'd be 2B. So we're going to slip it in between Alder Thomas because it's not exactly the same item.
And then 2B becomes 2C.
And 2B becomes, current 2B becomes 2C.
Right, that was my motion.
All right, is there a second?
Yep.
There's a motion, second discussion, hearing none. All those in favor of the amended, of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, going back to item F2 is the consent agenda. Unless there is something there that somebody wants to pull out to discuss, I would entertain a motion for approval of the entire consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second. Any discussion? Or all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Consent agenda has been approved. Item B1A under unfinished business is consideration of resolution 15-6-2033, amending the operating budget to reimburse costs to remove a sandbar interfering with navigation in Lagoon de Nord. This was brought forth by the Public Works Committee. Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second.
The motion in second. Discussion. Alder O'Connor?
I think at our last meeting, Alder Thomas mentioned that she thought the funding for this should come from the Stormwater budget. Did you find out more about that?
I, Mark checked with the auditors and it's much to my surprise, since we paid for the initial dredging out of Stormwater, the auditor said this wasn't appropriate use of this. I'm not sure I understand it, but one doesn't argue with auditors.
So this will come out of reserve fund?
Yeah, if approved, it would be a transfer from reserves to fund the $14,000 anticipated cost.
Further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Oh, it doesn't, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Bussie?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Spate?
Aye.
Alder O'Connor?
Aye.
Alder Holmquist?
Aye.
Alder Thomas?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 1B is consideration of resolution 15-6-2030, is approving the tax increment, District Number 9, brought forth by the CDA. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second. Discussion. City Administrator Marsh?
Yeah, just as we discussed at the last meeting, this has gone before Joint Review Board once. It's scheduled to go the final time next Tuesday, the 23rd, and that would be prior to the CDA meeting that evening also. There has not been any question from the public in regards to this document and the CDA did approve it at their last meeting. So again, this is TID 9, the area between the river, bridge, road and Broadway.
Questions? Yes, Alder Spate?
I know in the past, we've talked about the fact that there's a limit to the number of TID monies that we can leverage and...
Right.
Just, there isn't any financial information here. I'm just curious. Where are we at in that or do you happen to know offhand?
Right now, the state statute calls for 12% of total equalized value. The TIDs can't exceed 12% of total equalized value in the community. We are about just less than 1% of that.
Okay.
So we're very close. And, you know, that law could change in this, through the assembly. Right now, they're looking to move that to 15%, but have not acted on that yet. But this would be, if the law stays as is, this would be the last TID until TID 2 closes in 2018. And then that would open up a large amount of money and a large amount of room in that by definition.
Further questions?
Just a comment, I have a follow-up on that. But we'll go over the 12% cap because when Trace does, when its assessed value goes into the TIF, that will put us over the 12%.
Which is allowed. But this is why we're getting this done before August.
Yes, okay.
Alder Holmquist?
No.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Thomas?
Aye.
Alder Bussie?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Spate?
Aye.
Alder O'Connor?
Aye.
Alder Holmquist?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 2 is new business. 2A, you'll notice, start for immediate action, is consideration of 2014-15 Class A fermented malt beverage license application for Trace to Holdings LLC, otherwise known as Traced on the Water. 320 West Broadway, Monona, Wisconsin, the agent is Rebecca Anderson, who resides at 4905 Tony Watha Trail, Monona. It's brought forth by the License Review Committee.
Move just to suspend the rules and take this out of order?
Second.
There's a motion, second to suspend rules to take this out of order. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? So motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and second. Alder Wood?
Well, this is the, actually, this is for a license to sell, carry out malt beverages at a sort of cafe facility within the Trace development. This license goes to June 30th. The next one will be for the next license year.
Everyone heard that clear? Okay. Questions regarding this? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 2B, starred for immediate action, is all of the same, just with the date being effective July 1, 2015. Extending to, is there, is that an annual?
Yeah, so license year is June, I'm sorry, July 1st through June 30th.
Okay. So it's for next year.
Move to suspend the rules, take this item out of order?
There's a motion, suspend, and there's a second, suspend rules, take this item out of order. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval. Second.
Motion and second. Alder Thomas?
So Alder Wood, is this a restaurant that people are gonna?
No, it's sort of a snack bar, or that may be understating it, but it's within the Trace development. It's open, open to the public, but as was explained, it will be, you know, for the tenants or others can come in, get a sandwich there to take out and can get beer, in this case, or soda.
And take it any place?
Yeah, just sort of like you would any other carryout place. Is it kept in that main cooler in the lobby? Is that where this is located? In that kind of front entrance meeting room? There's a large cooler in there, a large? I'm not, not familiar with exactly where it is. Glass display case?
So I can buy a bottle of, I can buy a quart of vodka there?
No.
No.
Malt beverages.
Just malt and in containers and opened or non-opened?
Non-opened. It's for carryout.
Like bringing out a PDQ, right.
And they do have a garage door type facility that they, when they're not in, not open or after hours, that they close that and lock, would be able to lock that.
Then is that cooler? Because it's like garage door. City Administrator Marsh?
Yeah, right now, they sort of have like a cooler and almost like vending machines in there now. But it's gonna be a storefront similar to what you'd find in a hotel.
Time limit on, is there a time, can you do it at midnight?
No, it's the same, same limit, same hours of operations as any other.
I'm just looking to see that we're not opening up Pandora's Box to everybody else around who wants to put a vending machine with beer in it.
No, it's, they wouldn't be able to do that. They would have to, I think the vending machines that Pat was talking about are for, I don't know, fruits, sandwiches?
Temporary until they get this license and they have more of a customer presence.
They have to have a licensed operator there to sell the alcohol.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions or clarification? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 2C, starred for immediate action this evening, is consideration of resolution 15-6-2034, the appointing of an interim municipal judge, brought forth by the mayor. Is there a motion?
Move approval and move to suspend the rules.
Second. Is a motion?
Who seconded?
Brian.
Thank you.
Brian. Motion, suspend the rules. Discussion. Alder Wood?
I'm gonna vote against the motion to suspend the rules, not which doesn't reflect anything on the, the person that the mayor is appointed. It's sort of a process issue. I did talk to the city attorney to find out. I, first I'd heard.
Just debatable.
Can we discuss this or is?
I don't know. Vote to suspend the rules and, well, you can discuss the vote to suspend the rules, yeah.
Okay, nevermind. Sorry, Doug.
May not be successful, but. Anyway, I talked to the city attorney after I, you know, saw the packet. I wasn't aware that Judge Tinker was moving out of the community and that we were gonna need to do an interim appointment. I just feel like wait another, it'll be two weeks. I know what's today. Whenever our next meeting is, three weeks. And if there are other interested people in the community that are, you know, want to throw their names in the hat and be vetted, like I know some other candidates were, I think that's a more open, fair process. The city attorney indicated that in other cases where there's been a short, been a vacancy like this, that another judge or court commissioner can fill in for the municipal, you know, fill in for the city, serve as the municipal judge for whatever that would be, a couple of court dates, I would guess.
So if I can just add to how we got to this point. So three weeks ago, I was notified by City Attorney Cole that, well, I've known, Judge Tinker's house has been on the market for over a year. But he had an active offer and with a relatively quick close. So Attorney Cole contacted me and said, it looks like Judge Tinker will have to step down earlier, relatively soon. So I asked him what the process was and his suggestion was, do you know lawyers in the community or anyone? And not knowing the interest that might be out there. I said, well, I'll try to think of some and then if you could spread the word. And so, which he did, and then I reached out and talked to Judge Tinker. If he knew some, he knew some, so it went out. I think last night Attorney Cole sent out the names of those who formally applied. And just so you know, there's two kind of opposite between the ordinance. Because I just asked Bill, what's the process in here? And Bill suggested this process that I followed per his recommendation, which was not to have a, what, perhaps, not the right words, but a beauty pageant of what attorney's better than another attorney on this. He said, you know, if you need any help in vetting, you know, please involve. So he suggested just decide which one. He provided input. And so I reached out to Judge Tinker and met with him twice in terms of the candidates and also to Judge Elke, who I'm familiar with at Dane County. The city ordinance varies from the state. Bill follows, he said, where there's conflict, and he found conflict between the two, he tries to follow state ordinance. But the city ordinance is that there would be an election within so many days of the actual stepping down. Bill, I just found this out now. I didn't ask this question during the process because I just followed his direction, but felt, because this will be on the ballot next spring, that it could put undue, I mean, it's undue cost for the city to have a special election, which will be very low turnout and, and all of that. But that is in the city ordinance. But he said, he just, he felt this was the process that was used for Judge Tinker. Came in midterm for the previous judge. And so he was just following the same process he had followed before. But as Alder Wood says, there are provisions and he would, Attorney Cole would bring in another municipal judge to cover if there's an overlap, if there's not an overlap between the appointed judge and Judge Tinker. So I don't have a sense of urgency on this, so. Alder O'Connor?
I just have a question, and maybe you said this and I dismissed it, but we basically came up with the names that we were considering, kind of just by talking.
Just by, yeah, word of mouth. I'd been told that there probably wouldn't be much interest, but there was resounding interest. I mean, there were six candidates for, you know, various reasons. And the other thing, you don't have to be an attorney to be a judge. So there was, one of those candidates is a doctor. So the field could be wide open, so. Then the question will be, you know, unless there'd be, of those six, if we get six more, you know, I'll have to go through the same, I don't know what it, but this worked pretty well in terms of, I'm very comfortable with the person I picked. Yes?
You said if there was a gap in it being filled, that Attorney Cole would bring in another judge from elsewhere to help cover?
Some other community to cover.
Is there, how long could that process go? Could that go?
I don't know.
It could go through the end of the year.
Is there, was there a discussion on using that as the process all the way till the special election?
What's before you tonight was the only discussion, and that discussion was Bill calling three weeks ago saying, Mayor, we have to get a judge. And so that's what got, so I have no ax in this whatsoever. I just did what he suggested and this was the same process that was used to get Judge Tinker, and that seemed to have worked out well. Alder Thomas?
Well, I tend to agree with Doug, and if Bill Cole sent out an email to us all last night, I didn't get it. So I, I don't even know who we're talking about because it's not, the public doesn't know who it's gonna be. I don't know who it's gonna be because it's not on here. I, I don't have a clue. I don't have a clue who's interested. I don't have a clue what the options are. So I don't know. You may be comfortable with the choice, but I, it's, I feel more like a rubber stamp than like a, like I'm making a wise choice for who is a good judge.
It would be a rubber stamp. I made the choice. You know, well, we can do it different.
Well, I don't know.
But I don't, but Bill's concerned, I'm just gonna say, Bill does, is not anxious to have a, his exact words are a beauty pageant of lawyer versus lawyer versus lawyer, because to be the sixth place person, you know, really, they're not a good, you know. This is, this is a very loose requirement to be a judge, but I'm being respectful of the process and the position. It's an important position. So that's why I made the contacts and the reach out to the three people that I did. So this was based upon those conversations that led to that decision. But none of the six are bad people and, you know. Alder Wood?
You may recall that when Alder Susslick resigned during his term in office, that we did exactly that. We had a public process. I don't know how many people who were interested in being on the council. They all came in, made a short presentation, and we voted on it. I don't think we need to do that necessarily. I mean, you've made a, you know, a nomination, if you will. I just, my thing was more, I'm an attorney in the community and I didn't know about it.
So do, I'm fine. You know, if, if we want to do something different, I would just ask that, I'd like Bill, you know, I don't want to make that decision without Bill's input. So, but I'm fine if we want to table this until we can get.
First reading.
First reading, or first reading anyways. Or, yeah, exactly, if we don't elect.
The motion's still out there.
Yeah, the motion was.
But we haven't voted on that yet, so.
So is there still a motion to suspend rules and take this item out of order?
I'll remove my second.
I'll remove my first.
Removal. So is there anyone else who wants to suspend the rules, take this out of order? Hearing none? All right. So what we will do is prior to the second reading of this, we will make sure, any questions? But then that, to do what Alder Wood is suggesting might mean even moving it further down if we do a totally different tract.
I have not, finally not.
So it might not be a second reading of this. It might be that we're gonna do a different approach to, you might want to do something different, perhaps, or not. We'll see. All right. Any further discussion on this?
Mayor?
Yes, Alder Spate?
I guess I would suggest that it seems appropriate that we might consider that.
And you'll have that opportunity at that, so. I just want Bill here to, because there are two different, I suggest, and I'll get to you, the ordinance and state statute, so you know, because there's a bunch of different ways to do this.
But Mayor, I'm talking to Bill, the city attorney. I believe, and I didn't look at the ordinance, but I believe what he was talking about was, when you have a vacancy, even if you fill it on an interim basis, depending on how far away you are from the next election, you either do or do not have to have a special election.
Right.
But under the state statutes, we would not have to, apparently under the city ordinances, we would have to still have a special election. I think Bill's.
Maybe it would just help, if it's okay with everyone, it's two paragraphs, one paragraph for each. And they're relatively brief, so you can hear what the difference. So the Wisconsin statute reads, "A permanent vacancy in the office of municipal judge may be filled by temporary appointment of the municipal governing body, or if the judge is elected under Section 755, jointly by the governing bodies of all municipalities served by the judge. The office shall then be permanently filled by a special election, which shall be held concurrently with the next spring election following the occurrence of the vacancy." So next April. "Except that a vacancy occurring during the period after December 1st and on or before the date of the spring election shall be filled at the second succeeding spring governing election." "And except that governing body of a city or village, or if the judge is elected under Section 75501, Pren 4, the governing bodies of the participating cities or villages may, if the vacancy occurs before April 15th in the year preceding expiration of the term, order a special election." So that's the state. The city ordinance is shorter. "The municipal judge shall be elected at large at the spring election in even numbered years for a term of four years or until a successor is elected and qualifies. The term of office shall commence on May 1st, next succeeding the election. Midterm vacancies in the office of municipal judge shall be filled by special election to be held not less than 55 days nor more than 70 days after the order of the council, therefore." And all I know is Bill told me he defers to the state statute more than the ordinance, so.
No, that makes sense to me, I think.
Okay.
That'll be clarified in the code update.
Is it? Good, good. Alder Thomas?
With all due respect to you, Mr. Mayor, if I were going to vote for a judge, I'd want to know more than just their name. I'd want to know something about them.
I thought he sent that, I'll check my email. Did anyone else get it last night from Bill?
It was just a resume.
I mean, there's a resume in our packet.
But I think. She's talking about the folder group?
Okay.
So you want something beyond the resume or, because that's all I had to go by until I interviewed those three people. Further questions? Hearing none. We'll take this again at the next, at the July, when will that meeting be? Is the fourth gonna screw it up?
The 6th of July.
Okay.
First Monday in July.
All right. Moving on to item H is reports of committees, commissions, boards, mayors, city administrators, city attorney, and department managers. Alder O'Connor?
Uh, no reports.
Alder Spate? Alder Wood?
Library board meets tomorrow night and other than that, no report.
Alder Homequest?
No report.
Alder Thomas? Alder Bussie?
No report, Mayor.
City clerk?
I gotta say something.
Okay.
Please.
You're welcome to.
No.
We're clipping around.
No report, Mayor.
All right, city administrator Marsh?
CDA meets a week from tomorrow, and as I mentioned in the agenda item, Joint Review Board meets a week from tomorrow at 8:30 a.m., and that'll be in a large conference room at City Hall.
That's their final?
That is the final, unless they, unless they table it, but it would be their final kick at it. And then CDA next Tuesday, and that's it.
Since we are not meeting again a couple celebration dates with the 4th, you may or may not be aware, but there will be a Lakes Firework again called Shake the Lake, this time brought by Festival Foods and the Madison Mallards. I've not talked, I haven't heard back from police chief, but I assume similar procedures to what was done last year about parking for Manona residents who want to use the lakeshore to see the fireworks. And that will be, I believe, the 27th is the Saturday? I thought it was the 26th, but is 27? Is that? And so then the following week is 4th of July Festival, Manona Festival. And that July 4th is a Saturday again, that's right, Saturday again, so. And then we will meet on the 6th, so, yes?
Just in terms of our fireworks celebration, the date is the 4th, but the makeup date is the 5th.
For a rain day.
For a rain day, yeah.
Okay, any questions, or anyone want to add anything? Other than that, that's all I have. Appointments, we have a new appointment of Matt Arro to the Landmarks Commission. And we have returning members Leslie Bussie and Pat Howell to sustainability, and Bed Redding, Sarah Carew, and Sue Carr to the library board. Is there a motion for approval of these appointments?
Move approval.
Second. Motion second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, appointments will take place. Is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of adjournment, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
And it's not even 7 o'clock.